We're gonna go live in five, four, three, two, one. Good evening, everybody, and good evening to those joining us online. We are gonna go ahead and get started, and we will kick it off with our Pledge of Allegiance, so please feel free to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item up tonight is our consent item. We have meeting minutes from October the fourteenth, 2024. Do we have a motion to adopt those meeting minutes?
I'd like to move that we adopt the meeting minutes from October... Sorry, I don't have the day written for fourteen. October fourteenth, 2024.
Do we have a second?
A little second.
Very well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. These October fourteenth, 2024, meeting minutes have been approved. Moving on to citizen input on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on non-agenda items. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. Staff and Planning Commission will make every effort to respond to the questions raised during citizens' input before the meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. You may speak on non-agenda items via Zoom at the provided link, and you must provide your name, the topic you would like to speak on, and your phone number. Looks like we have one person, Nicole Plop, who would like to discuss law enforcement in and around the park. And Nicole, would you like to come up to the desk there, and the microphone's already on for you?
Okay, thanks. So my name is Nicole Plop, and my address is 2344 Southeast First Avenue. So I'm very close to the Columbia Distributing Plant, and I will be across the street from the OLCC building. And I just want to bring to everyone's attention, it's getting crowded over there with the trucks and the employee parking and traffic and this and that. Columbia is using Walnut as a truck stop, if y'all weren't aware. They park overnight there and that kind of thing. So I would just like to encourage, as this whole thing is discussed, Project Meadowlark and OLCC is coming, welcome, by the way, that you guys take a really hard look at how it's impacting the area specifically outside the industrial park. Another source of trouble is all the trucks on Haynes Road. So when we had the meeting for Columbia, they discussed the fact that, well, Haynes Road is not a truck route, you know? And unfortunately, they're still barreling down that. And I know it's not Columbia trucks, it's like the outside vendors. So I would just like to encourage everyone during this application process, looking at the big picture, making sure it's safe for even just pedestrians as they walk down Southeast First, trying to get into town. They're currently having to... There are no sidewalks and that kind of thing. So all this stuff will come about, I'm sure, once the project goes forward, but just not to forget about the citizens that live out in that area and for our safety and the safety of everyone that works at those buildings as well. The traffic, not only the semi-traffic, as you can imagine with Columbia Distributing, has just gone through the roof. OLCC will just bring more, you know? So just like speeding issues. They're on Southeast First, and they're wanting to park on Walnut overnight, so they'll stop on Southeast First, going in both directions, and back up the road, you know, onto Walnut and find a spot to park. I've been in contact with the police department, and it sounds like they have made an agreement with Columbia that they're allowing people to park there on one side of the road as to not block lanes. I've talked to code enforcement, and they're also saying, even though there's no parking signs all over Walnut, that they're also allowing that to happen. It will be interesting when OLCC comes in and uses Walnut and builds their sidewalks. Where will all this truck traffic go? So I'm talking about the vendors that arrive at like 3:00 AM in the morning, and they can't get in yet to pick up their load, so they don't really have anywhere to go. So these are like logistical things that need to be worked out with OLCC's soon-to-be neighbors, i.e. Columbia Distributing, you know, and that kind of thing. I did contact, I believe his name is Jerry. He's awesome, by the way, and I asked him if he could please put up a speed sign on Southeast First because there was none. So unfortunately, a lot of Columbia's employees are younger, and they've got fast cars, and, you know, they go, you know, up to sixty on our roads out there, and that's just not gonna work with all the semis pulling in and out onto Southeast First. So he was awesome, and he got a speed sign up immediately. What I haven't seen are any signs directing the trucks, like, you know, ninety-degree angle turn onto Southeast Hazelwood. So they come barreling down and then realize they need to make a left-hand turn, and they do that, what we used to call it, jake braking. Yeah, so that's not great. And then the big semis that are making a right-hand turn off of Hazeldale onto Southeast First to get up to Columbia, they have to pull into the left-hand turn lane, they make a wide turn to miss the telephone pole, which brings them into oncoming traffic onto Southeast First. So that's it. I mean, this is the planning, you know, meeting, so I just wanted to bring all of this to your attention, that we're... This is awesome, that we're bringing all this business to Canby. It's great, but just not to put the cart before the horse. And then one last question, and maybe we'll discuss it in the meeting, is will you be giving us tonight a timeline of when the punch-through road is supposed to happen? Awesome. That was it.
That, and Nicole, you're talking Walnut Extension?
Yeah.
That's something, I wish Dan was here tonight, one of the fellow commissioners. That has been his bailiwick, so to speak. Every meeting, when are we getting an update? When are we getting it? Because we usually get updated by city staff.
Yeah, and we were informed, residents were informed at the other meetings, one with OLCC, that they were under the impression that that road would be in before they're up and running.
Oh. I think the last we heard was fall of twenty-four. Is that... I'm sorry, fall of twenty-five, is that correct?
Yes, that's still the approximate timeline. We actually just got word that the indenture of access, which is an ODOT thing for access onto ninety-nine, the final approval just was finalized. So engineering, engineering's already in process for the actual road, but that's gonna keep moving forward. That was one of the biggest hurdles, was the indenture of access. And so, yeah, so second half of 2025 is still the projected...
To be started or to be completed?
I think they're hoping to start work in the summer.
Summer of 2025.
If I may, I have a little information to share. Part of my ex parte to mention for the hearing, I reached out to Public Works this morning. I'm also on the Traffic Safety Committee, and so we get updates about the projects periodically, but I hadn't heard a timeline, and I was not even asking about the timeline so much as asking about what the intersection was gonna look like. Are they going to put in like a full intersection where everybody has to stop and there's ability for the...
Are you talking about at ninety-nine?
At ninety-nine in Walnut after the Walnut Extension happens.
Okay, but not at Walnut and Southeast First.
I don't know what it's gonna look like at Walnut and Southeast First, but for ninety-nine, it is gonna have full signaling in all directions.
Of course.
You never know. That's kind of unpredictable. But I also got, just without asking, an update on the timeline, and they're about to put it out for the engineering group that's going to do it, so they're about to put it out to bid. They should have that set by early twenty-five, and they expect to have it done by late twenty-five to have it all built out.
Oh, really?
And then the information we were given in our packets is that OLCC was looking at about a twelve-to-fourteen-month window to get it built, and then a couple more months to actually have it up and running. So I think, fingers crossed.
Well, and we'll dive more into that in the hearing itself, so...
Sure. And the only reason I was asking is because that'll determine what traffic is gonna look like on all the other roads.
So Nicole, my apologies. I'm gonna brief... We're gonna revisit some of these during the actual hearing portion, because this was non-agenda items for public comment.
I'm ready.
So agenda items, we'll bring this back up to make sure that some of that feedback gets at least addressed from the applicant. Does that sound good?
Yep.
All right, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Yeah, Matt, I was gonna say, Nicole, you might, if you have any, anything that you've already mentioned that's specific to the project, you might actually wanna repeat it so it's in the record if you wanna have standing for the project.
Thanks.
Does that sound good to you, Nicole? Yeah, okay, so we'll call you back up just to restate a few of those items? Okay, awesome. You good with that, Ryan? All right. Any other citizen input on non-agenda items? Nope. Okay. Moving on to old business, we have none, so that was easy. New business, none, which then takes us to our public hearing. Tonight, there is a matter before the hearing body that requires a public hearing. All interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matters. If you wish to testify on these matters, please fill out a public testimony card. Give it to the recording secretary. When your name is called, please step forward to the microphone at the front of the table, state your name, address, and interest in the matter. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In doing so, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. All questions must be directed through the chair, that's myself. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. Staff will have five minutes for presentation, questions, if any, by the hearing body or staff can be brought up at that point. The chair will open the public hearing for testimony. The applicant will present for twenty minutes, or up to twenty minutes. Proponents will have three minutes. Opponents will have three minutes, and any rebuttal will be ten minutes. Questions, if any, by the hearing body will be brought up at that point, and then discussions by the hearing body will be had after that. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing on each matter, or it will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the procedure of the public hearings before we begin? No? All right, with that, we will turn it over to Mr. Potter, our Planning Manager, to discuss product metal... I'm sorry, Project Meadowlark, BR24-01.
Good evening, Chair Ellison and members of the commission. So tonight, as the chair said, we are gonna talk about Project Meadowlark, and some people also refer to this as the OLCC project. Give me one second. It just worked a second ago. Okay. All right, so this slide is showing the project vicinity. The subject property is about thirty-four acres. It's located at the intersection of First Avenue and Walnut Street. You can see it's in our industrial park. It's surrounded by a mixture of industrial uses, ancillary commercial uses mostly related to industrial, and then some vacant parcels. There's also a couple unincorporated parcels that are adjacent. And as I said, there's frontage on both First and Walnut, although we'll see later on, the proposed project is mainly taking access off Walnut. The zoning is M1 light industrial, so this is similar to a lot of the more recent industrial projects that we've seen. It's surrounded by other, mostly M1-zoned property. You can see there's the few unincorporated parcels that are technically still in the county. One is directly to the south, to the north, and then the Zor Lutheran Cemetery, which is kind of surrounded by the subject property. And then in addition to the underlaying M1 zone, there's also an overlay zone for the industrial park, which you all are pretty familiar with, because most of the industrial projects we've seen lately also have that overlay. And there's development standards in both. So the proposed project is a new distribution and warehouse facility for OLCC, which is a state agency. It would include about three hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet of warehouse space, and then some ancillary office space, about twelve thousand square feet. It would also include maneuvering areas, parking, landscaped areas, pedestrian paths, and a public amenity out in the front near Walnut. In addition to OLCC's project, the applicant team is proposing to do a lotline adjustment because currently the subject property is three parcels. It would turn it into two, and the smaller one would be left set aside for future development or for future sale, and it wouldn't be part of the OLCC project. This project includes a conditional use permit for some additional building height required for the project, and then there's a few exceptions related to vehicular parking, bicycle parking, and driveway widths. So this is a slide showing the subject property with the proposed lotline adjustment. So this is turned, so north is to the left. You can see parcel A is on the left, and then parcel B is on the right, and that's where the OLCC project would be. And so this slide and the next one show some terminology that I used in the staff report, which is, we're calling the whole thing the subject property, and then the project site is where OLCC would be. So as you can see on the slide, the piece to the left would be left vacant for now. Some of this content will likely be in the applicant's slideshow, so I'm not gonna go into detail, but it's got a... The proposed project has a pretty typical warehouse building elevation. You can see the main tilt-up concrete walls for the warehouse, and then the darker shaded area is the office portion of the building. And then here's some details showing that there's a lot more variety of materials and visual interest on that human-scaled office component of the building that would be at the front. So this project has a number of criteria that apply to it when reviewing it for approval. All the normal suspects that we would get for all design review projects, but also the M1 underlaying zoning chapter, the overlay zone, lighting standards, conditional uses, that's for the additional building height. The zone allows forty-five feet maximum, but this building is just a little bit taller, and we'll go into that. And then our normal approval and application standards. So this is just a really high-level summary of some of the conclusions of the staff report. The proposed use is allowed. This is basically what this zone was designed for. Warehouses and distribution centers are permitted uses, and ancillary office use is also permitted in the zone and in the overlay zone. For the building height, the building in... You'll see, probably in the applicant's presentation, but most of the building is forty-six feet high, so it's just a little bit taller than what's allowed, and I think at the highest, it's fifty feet, five inches, and they can correct me on that. So there's some criteria for a conditional use permit based on that. Driveway widths, an exception, is requested to have fifty-foot driveway widths. We've seen this on basically every single industrial project that we've seen in the industrial park. I suspect this is a development standard we'll probably change in the future, since it comes up all the time as forty feet is not enough. So that's usually not a surprise for larger industrial projects. Signage, there's no signage proposed at this time, so that'll be a separate permitting process. That's pretty typical. And then, as documented in the staff report, all the criteria are met for the lotline adjustment, which is sort of a lotline adjustment, but also a lot consolidation, but we classify it all as a lotline adjustment. Traffic was analyzed originally for a larger version of the project, and then a supplementary traffic study was produced by the city's traffic consultant, basically analyzing the difference between the previous version and this version, which will create less trips than the previous one. But overall, this version of the project is anticipated to generate about five hundred and eighty-four daily trips. And I want the commission's feedback on this table. This is something I included in the staff report. This is something I'm trying to introduce, because a lot of our conversation tends to revolve around the traffic study conclusion, so I'm hoping this is a helpful tool to kind of see the difference between the impacts. So basically, this is all the intersections that were studied in the traffic study and the supplemental study, and you can see that, under existing conditions, most intersections are not exceeding mobility standards, except for ninety-nine at Haynes Road, which we've heard before is obviously an issue. In 2025, when this project is anticipated to open if approved, Pine and Fourth, which is over by the fairgrounds, is also projected to fail mobility standards, but you can see in this table, it's projected to fail both with and without the project. So those are worsening traffic conditions at those intersections, regardless of this project. Oh, and I should... So if you notice in the conditions of approval, similar to other industrial projects that we've done lately, because Haynes Road at ninety-nine is not an intersection within our jurisdiction and something we can't require improvements for, we... The city has developed a in-lu fee on top of system development charges, and so like Canby South and the other projects that we've looked at lately, the traffic study for this project identifies a in-lu fee to mitigate for the Haynes and overall ninety-nine-e corridor impacts. And those funds generated by that in-lu fee are directed towards the Walnut Street extension, which we were talking about earlier. And so, like Commissioner Driscoll said, it's a little unknown, if this project was approved, whether the project or Walnut would be finished first, but they would be around the same timeline. And so, in addition to system development charges, there's a condition of approval that identifies the in-lu fee. For parking, the project requires an exception to parking standards, as you can see in this table, which is the same one that was in the staff report. Three hundred and sixty spaces are required. The applicant team is proposing one hundred and forty-five spaces, and unlike several of the projects we've seen lately that were more speculative, this is obviously a project that has a specific tenant. OLCC has done a lot of data collecting on their daily... OLCC has done a lot of data collecting on their daily operations and their request, which they could probably elaborate on if the commission has questions. Is, the number that they're coming up with is based on their own assessment of their parking needs. And so an exception is required for both vehicular parking and bicycle parking. And that's based on their own assessment of how many employees they'll have at this facility. And then for the CUP criteria, these are just the four criteria, not staff's response to the criteria, which are outlined in the staff report. But basically, there's a carve-out in our CUP chapter that's, generally CUPs are for certain uses in certain zones, and we've seen that in a lot of our zoning chapters. But our CUP chapter has a couple carve-outs that are kind of separate from specific zoning chapters. And so the applicant team is proposing to use one of those for the height, the additional height, because that's one of the items that's specifically identified as something that a CUP can be granted for. And so these four criteria basically are the lens in which the planning commission is supposed to determine if the CUP is approvable. And those include consistency with city policies, the characteristics of the neighborhood in the vicinity, whether or not public facilities and services can service the project. And we didn't really go into that, but that is a conclusion of the staff report based on what our service providers have told us is this project site can be adequately served by all utilities and services. And then lastly, kind of the character of the surrounding area. Obviously, when a new big building comes in, it does have an effect on the aesthetic quality and the visual character of a neighborhood. But the CUP in this case is for really that extra couple feet delta between the 45 feet that's normally allowed in this zone and the, and the up to 50 feet that is being requested for the building. And the applicant team can elaborate on this, but that's based on their need for 36 feet clear of racking within the warehouse. So requests for comments are always circulated with design review projects. We received one public comment, and we just got that Friday, that was from Zor Lutheran Church. Because it was late, it wasn't able to be part of the packet or addressed in the staff report. But I've uploaded that to the packet website. I've also printed it for the planning commission to see. And then I believe their representative is also here if the commission has questions about any of their comments. And then also, in the applicant presentation, they're obviously free to respond to any of the questions or comments that Zor Lutheran had identified.
Ryan, is that separate from attachment F, the VLMK interview question and answer period? The comments you're talking about that you uploaded late?
It's printed out, it's separate.
That's the other, okay, that's the PW4, 5, 6 through 10, I think?
That's something separate that I'm going to get to, I think, in the next slide.
Okay. Yeah.
But I just, this is about public comments, so I just wanted to highlight that that did come in. Staff's assessment is, it didn't appear that there was anything in Zor Lutheran Church's comments that were inconsistent with the project. But the applicant can speak to that if they see anything that's inconsistent with their plans. We also received agency and service provider comments from the list up on the screen, including ODOT, the county, and all the usual suspects of our own departments and service providers. And basically, their comments revolved around requirements and conditions, and most of those are pretty normal for a project of this type. So in the end, as summarized in the staff report, 34 conditions were identified by staff. A vast majority of these are standard conditions that we see for any project of this size. I just wanted to highlight a couple. I already spoke about this, but there's a condition about the transportation in-lu fees. That's condition number three. We are starting to identify a condition for all large industrial projects that just is a reminder that noise in excess of our code requires a variance to go to the city council for approval. Noise has been an issue in the industrial park, so that's just something we are trying to highlight. Because this project site is directly adjacent to a cemetery, we've also got a specific condition that requires the applicant team to stop and notice the county and others, or the city and others if a unplanned discovery of remains or grave sites are discovered. And then lastly, and this is what Chair Ellison was alluding to. So on Friday, we got some comments from the applicant team. They were being great about proactive, about having follow-up conversations with our public works team. And so they've refined, over the last month, some of the frontage improvements. And so they provided some comments to planning staff on Friday, and I've printed those out for the commission. And they can speak to these more. And we just wanted to highlight them because they don't necessarily conflict with any of the conditions. I was, I was going through the conditions before the meeting, and our conditions about public improvements largely just refer back to public works comments that were received when agencies and departments provided their comments. But those have been updated. And so this is a little bit of a unique situation. Ideally, the applicant team would like us to acknowledge that there are some tweaks to what the frontage improvements will be, and we're not exactly sure how to address that. But one option is for the planning commission, if they were to approve this project, to approve it with the conditions as identified, but direct staff to tweak those conditions prior to second reading, noting that public works will have some additional edits to that condition about the frontage improvements. So I just wanted to highlight that. And I believe the applicant team will probably elaborate on that a little bit. So nothing that is a deal breaker with the content of the staff report, but are just kind of refinements to the frontage improvements. So based on the application submitted and the facts and findings and conclusions of the staff report, planning staff recommend that the planning commission approve applications DR 24-01, conditional use permit 24-01, and the lot line adjustment 24-04. And then on this slide, I just have a little caveat, repeating what I just said a moment ago about some of the late-breaking comments on some of the public works requirements. And with that, that's the conclusion of my staff report.
Thank you, Ryan. Before we open it up to the applicant, are there any questions from the planning commission for staff, starting with Commissioner Giroux? Anything you'd like to clarify or discuss before we get going?
No, I don't think so. No, thank you.
No, I have some feedback for future ones.
Somebody needs their microphone.
I said I have some feedback for future presentations, but nothing relevant now.
Nothing, nothing, all right.
Nothing for me?
Nothing.
Okay. And then one thing I failed to do before we got started was the statement of conflict of any conflict of interests. Anybody on the planning commission, we need to address at this time if there is any conflict of interest regarding the approval of this project. And we'll start with Commissioner Giroux.
No conflict of interest.
No conflict, ex parte contact with public works to ask about the intersection of First and 99.
Okay.
No conflict, but I did own some of this property. I sold it four and a half years ago to Trammell Crowe, but I have no conflict.
I have none.
No conflict.
No conflict.
All right, very well. So with that said, we will open it up to the applicant for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. There we go. Okay, thank you, thanks, Ryan. I think Ryan covered most of it spot-on. Project Metal Arc on behalf of OLCC is going to be the occupant, Coming Group and LRS Architects and VLMK Engineers.
And can you, for the record, just to go into the record, can you state your name and who you represent?
Yeah, my name is Ben Hagerman with VLMK Engineering.
Thank you, Ben.
We are the, on the design team. So design review application, DR 2401. As Ryan mentioned, we meet all the applicable criteria, except for the three exceptions that we're requesting, the driveway widths and the off-street parking for bicycle and autos. Our conditional use application for the increase in building height and the lot line adjustment. So as Ryan mentioned, the site is located at the corner of First and South Walnut Street in the Pioneer Industrial Park, zoned M1 IO overlay. The allowed use, the beverage distribution center and accessory office meets all the allowed uses within that site and zoning. The existing site comprised of three parcels, the Llewellyn site, the LaRusso, and the Palmer site. We are going to be vacating one lot line and pushing one lot line north to create two parcels. Parcel A, almost 9.3 acres, will be left unoccupied and undeveloped. Parcel B is for our main design review application and conditional use permit. This is showing the Walnut Street Extension. And as you can see over on the left-hand side, as Ryan mentioned, fall of 2025, we're expecting the Walnut Street Extension to be complete. OLCC's expected occupancy date isn't until summer or fall, late 2026. So I think we should meet that window, and our occupancy should fall after that completion. I guess I should add on to that. The, all traffic for construction will use the First Avenue, Hazeldale, Sequoia avenues, but once occupied, everything should go through Walnut Street. So a little animation showing the truck traffic coming from South Walnut Street on the north half of the site. And as you can see, a little bit down from the furthest north entrance off of Walnut Street, there's a gated entrance with a guard that'll be in attendance. And all traffic outside of that guard shack that you see will be onsite queuing, so we won't have any of the queuing problems that Columbia Distributing has. All truck traffic will be kept onsite, even off-hours. So we won't have those issues that Columbia Distributing has. The driveway on the far south end of the site, which is our right, on the drawing right, is mainly for emergency traffic only. It'll be used for auto traffic to access the main parking lot, but there will be no truck traffic using that far southern entrance. All utilities are already present in South Walnut Street. We will be doing public works improvements on First Avenue. They will include street frontage, sidewalk, bike lane, and full frontage improvements along First Avenue. And as Ryan mentioned, the public works comments that came up, the, our street frontage at First Avenue will be completely improved. The majority of the comments that we were coordinating with public works come further west down First Avenue that aren't in front of the proposed frontage. So there's a separate property owner, and it would, it would require extensive legal coordination to get some of that stuff done. So through coordination with public works, we've narrowed down some of those comments to be able to keep that a little bit more constructable. All the stormwater is kept onsite, which is typical of these Canby projects. So there'll be underground infiltration systems. Nor stormwater will enter the public, right, the public system. You can see our main parking lot up front. We have a sculpture courtyard that is our main public amenity up front. And you can see an outdoor staff area that's outside on the southern half of our office component. And we have a, you know, pretty substantial landscaping plan that is going to create a real nice park-like atmosphere out there with, beyond what you would normally see in these industrial parks, a little bit nicer than what Columbia Distributing has done. And the interior warehouse is, majority of it is high piled storage, which is storage racking as high as we can get it, basically from the slab to the roof structure, keeping that 36-foot clear height as high as possible. Land has become a premium in our area, so going high has become the alternate. So we can gain rack space going vertical much easier than we can gain racking space growing the footprint wide. These are a couple of sample images that show what high piled storage racking looks like. The automated conveyor system, a sample of what will be present inside the facility. And I guess I should go back. So the OLCC distilled spirits distribution warehouse. So this is, the entire warehouse will be distilled spirits. A pretty typical concrete industrial building from the outside. It looked pretty similar to Columbia Distributing across the street, except for the office component is much nicer, enhanced with some metal panels and some extra concrete. So we get into our exceptions. The first exception is the driveway width exception. We showed a turning movement where you can see that your normal large semi truck, in order to stay within the, their own right-hand turn lane going southbound on Walnut Street, it's necessary to have the larger, the larger radius and the larger widened driveway. The similar effect comes on right in from Walnut Head, southbound, and turning into that lane, you get the same effect. So these industrial projects just require that larger driveway width. Here's a couple of examples of neighboring properties with that same driveway configuration with the same radius and the same width. So we can see Columbia Distributing, Lampro Steel down the street, Crusoe Produce, Pacific Motion, several products, projects that have been approved with the same exception. This goes into the parking requirement. So you can see, as Ryan mentioned, 360 spaces required. OLCC is proposing 145 spaces. Nobody wants a big empty parking lot. So we have the space on the site. We could develop the parking lot if we wanted to, but it's just not necessary, and it would just take up extra space, extra stormwater treatment. The environmental concerns, it's just not, it's not reasonable at that point. I guess I could speak to the employee count. So we have 100 employees currently in, at their Milwaukee facility. They'll be relocating the Milwaukee facility. Approximately 20% growth leaves them at 120 employees over two shifts overlapping, which 145 spaces is ample. which 145 spaces is ample for that. And then any commission meetings that happen after hours will occupy all 145 spaces. So the parking exception, we show where we have three main parking lots. The main parking lot on the southeast corner, and then we have employee parking lots on the east and west sides of the building. And then you can see up in the north of the cemetery, there's a large area where we could potentially meet the parking requirement if we had to. It's just not necessary for the use on this site. So the conditional use, within the IO overlay zone, 45-foot maximum billing height. As Ryan mentioned, written into the conditional use language, it's allowed up to 75 feet with an increased setback of five feet for every five feet of height. So basically a one-to-one, so if we want to increase our height, we just need to increase our setback. And we're going up to 50.5 feet, which is five and a half feet over the maximum. Our minimum setback at 35 feet would be an increased minimum setback of 40.5 feet, and we have 62 feet at the south end and approximately 266 feet at South Walnut Street. So we have adequate space to go as high as we need to necessarily. This shows that northern elevation where we have the 50.5-foot height at the peak. This allows the building to be expanded in the future, north. So if in the future OLCC wanted to expand the building, that would expand north, and we have the area on the site to accommodate the parking if that were to ever happen. So this is kind of a cross-section showing South Walnut Street with the street improvements and a couple of trees and our proposed building with the 266-foot setback. The sightline that we see, which we believe is kind of the intent of the code, to keep the building's height, to keep the sightline and of the neighboring mountains and the trees and scenery. You can see with a minimum allowed height, that if we were to set within the 35-foot setback and the 45-foot max height, you lose a good majority of that sightline. So I think we're meeting the intent of the code by pushing the building back from the street and back from the property boundary and keeping the height as low as possible. And then this shows our comparison to the Columbia Distributing across the street, where Columbia Distributing sits approximately 14 feet above the roadway. So, and their building height is the same. It's 46-foot parapet height, which OLCC will be at 46-foot parapet height. And then they also have a peak at approximately 50.5 feet. So similar building, a little bit less setback, pretty negligible difference on the site. So this goes back to our recommended approvals with our exceptions. And I think that includes, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ben. At this time, we will bring up any proponents that would like to speak on behalf of the project. Do we have any proponents that would like to speak on behalf of the project other than the presenter? Okay, Mr. Jeff Samuels, take it away.
Hi, Chair and Commissioners, Jeff Samuels with OLCC. I'm the Administrative Services Division Director. I oversee facilities as part of my duties and a part of this project. Basically, I wanted to just be in front of you to answer any questions that you might have, also to clarify some things, particularly for the, for the public. In our construction contract, we have that the construction crew and all the trucks coming in, delivering goods, would not be on First Avenue, would strictly come on Walnut Boulevard from the south, north into the property, and then leave going south on Walnut to Sequoia, so that we didn't impact that First Avenue or down beyond Columbia Distributing. So just to clarify that, please.
If I could, let's see here. I do want to, I did want to ask how you plan to convey that and enforce that with that many different drivers, I'm assuming different shifts, different hours, different days of the week. How is that imparted to the staff and how is that enforced?
Yeah, so this would, particularly what I just described is within the construction contract with our contractor and the subcontractors and all of the deliveries during construction.
Okay.
Of course, we're hoping that the Walnut Street extension's in. And then, like was mentioned, we feel that we're going to have about 100 staff, both warehouse staff and a few office staff that are going to come in. And I think with that Walnut Street extension, that'll free up things. And of course, we, those, for our, for our distribution of distilled spirits and the trucks related to that, we certainly can dictate through our contracts, truck traffic. Now, employees, employee vehicles, which would be passenger vehicles,
Sure.
we will certainly, to, you know, provide staff with direction to go certain areas, but it wouldn't be truck traffic on First Avenue or the other direction.
And you're talking, and in that instance, you're talking about OLCC contracted truck and trailer traffic.
Correct, and we could dictate to them which way they would come in and out of our building.
Well, do you know if there'll be truck route signage for that project, for those drivers? Let's say you get a new person, they're just not familiar. Do we know if there will be truck route signage?
I would assume so, but I haven't heard anything concrete about that.
Okay, all right.
You mean on the new facility?
Yeah. Leading, leading to it, yeah. Okay. Hang on just, hang on just a second. Sorry, Jeff, is that everything from, from your perspective you wanted to present?
Well, then, just, just the reasoning for us to come to Canby and be part of the community and provide jobs to the local area. But, you know, we're in Milwaukee right now. We've been there for 70 years, 70-plus years, so we're going to be a long-term tenant. That's our goal with this facility. And, you know, we've just outgrown. So we, we had our main warehouse, original warehouse. We outgrew it, we built onto it. We called, in 1977, a '77 edition. We outgrew that. We then purchased another warehouse about a half mile away from our headquarters. And as you can imagine, it's just, logistically, it's not efficient. We've got product coming, we're receiving product in one warehouse, have to move it to the main warehouse for shipping it out. So we're touching it multiple times where this facility and the way we're designing it.
Would you happen to know, Jeff, what your employee head count average would be over the last five years?
Right now, our warehouse employee count is around 65.
65. And has that been pretty consistent over the last five years?
It has.
Okay, all right.
But we do anticipate with, you know, as was mentioned by VLMK, that we would get to about 90 warehouse staff and about 10 office staff.
Mm-hmm, got it.
And I think it was mentioned, like, after-hours commission meetings, and we're not going to have commission meetings onsite at the warehouse, just for clarity.
Gotcha.
So we're going to have our commission at either our current location or if we move to a different facility.
Do any of the other planning commissioners have any questions, comments for, sorry, for Mr. Samuels?
I've got a handful.
I have a handful, if I may. So the number of employees, you were saying that you've got about 65 now and about 10 administrative folks, so about 75 active now? Is that a fair number?
That's fair, but we anticipate with the move and the increase in our distribution.
The documentation that I saw said that the 10-year occupancy level was expected to be about 100, and then Jeff, or, excuse me, Ben, said more like 120, which would be both. So 120 seems more accurate than 100 at 10 years.
I, I think that's just anticipating. We feel we're going to be at 100 with the anticipated growth, bringing on additional staff to have the 120s.
Okay, I remember seeing that there's no plan for cannabis to be stored at that location. Could that change in the future?
That we are, this is a liquor distribution facility.
Okay, and then, let's see, sorry, it's a long list of things. Does the distribution center serve a specific area of Oregon?
All of Oregon.
It is all of Oregon.
We have a control state model in Oregon, and so all the liquor that is distributed to all of the agents and liquor stores throughout Oregon goes, would go through this warehouse.
Okay, and you said that you guys contract with different trucking companies to do the work, so they're not OLCC-owned trucks. They are contracted with you guys to do the deliveries.
That is true.
Okay. And some of the other questions I have are more about the engineering side of things.
We can always circle back to that.
Perfect, I think that's everything I have for now, thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Llewellyn, nothing. All right, Commissioner Jaroche?
Nothing now.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Ellison?
Nothing right now, thank you.
All right. If you have nothing further, Jeff, the young lady in the audience had comments she wanted to speak to.
I just wanted to support him. When we say the truck routes during construction, we attach the truck route to the contract, and it is expected that it is attached to every subcontractor's contract, and there will be penalties if they don't adhere.
All right, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to cover it. We really did make that specific.
Got it, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. And at this time, we will open it up for any opponents. And I know that Nicole didn't say she was an opponent or proponent, but I think this would be a good time to have you come back up and readdress on the record just a couple of those items, if you feel comfortable doing so.
Sure. Okay, so...
Not to belabor it, sorry, I know you already did this, but name and address just for the record.
So my name is Nicole Plop, and my address is 2344 Southeast First Avenue in Canby.
Thank you.
And I initially had come up just with a request that we all take into consideration the residents that are along the industrial park area, which I'm sure you guys do. But, you know, sometimes what I've found is things are said and then they're not followed through with. So I would just reiterate that to make sure there's the correct signages up as far as directing the trucks, directing the employees, directing the traffic. I don't know who's in charge of that in a city. It seems like when I had to call and ask for a speed sign, that was kind of strange. There's no signage about the 90-degree angle from Southeast First onto Hazeldale, which is kind of strange when you have semis coming around the corner. I love that OLCC is being so considerate about having the construction traffic go Walnut to Sequoia, which was built for big trucks, versus having them to try to maneuver a teeny little corner down at Southeast First and Hazeldale. In, I believe it was Ben's presentation, I did have a question. Did it not show truck traffic on Southeast First? Is that after construction is over, but before the Walnut Punch Through Road? Ben, do you remember? On your, it was like your first slide.
Ben, do you want to approach the desk and just answer?
Yeah, I would just, I thought I saw all the cars and everything coming onto Southeast First, was that correct? Or trucks, more specifically.
Yeah, our anticipation is that by the time the site is occupied, all traffic will take South Walnut to 99.
Okay, so those, all that traffic down Southeast First and at that teeny little corner by Southeast First and Hazeldale, ideally, that won't be used at all by your trucks. Ideally, the Punch Through Road is completed, and everybody will be going in and out of that. Was there a road that went from your property and came out on Southeast First?
Not currently.
Okay.
So the undeveloped parcel fronts First Avenue.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So no driveways with this development in First Avenue.
Yeah, that's all I had, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Wonderful, all right, thank you very much, Nicole.
Okay.
At this time, are there any rebuttal testimony that needs to be given on anything we've heard in terms of the presentation or the opponent commentary? No? All right. So at this point, we will close the public hearing, should we not have any more comment, so that we can deliberate and ask our questions. So going once, going twice, going three times, all right? We are officially closing the public testimony and hearing, and that will turn to our planning commission commissioners to discuss the project and ask any questions. Ben, we may be calling on you as we kind of move through some of our own deliberations, sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's start with Commissioner Jaroche. Commissioner Jaroche, as far as the application, DR 2401 or CUP 2401 or the property line application, do you have any concerns, comments, things that we haven't addressed or that the paperwork hasn't addressed or that you've mentioned, or have you seen any errors?
I just have a couple of questions for clarification. So perhaps a timeline of the history of the OLCC. You know, when, when did you, did you buy the property, are you leasing the property? I didn't see that in the documentation.
Let's see if we can get...
I mean, how long had they held the property, I guess is what I'm curious.
Okay. Ben, is that something you can speak to, or is that something that's going to be, I'm sorry, Jeff's?
Maybe we could have them both come up, so they're just ready to...
Sure, yeah, that probably is a good idea, sorry, guys.
Yeah, and I guess I could start by saying that the original development, the parcel was purchased by Trammell Crowe, as mentioned previously, and we had a design review application that was approved. So we had a three-building site that has been previously approved. That approval has since...
Yeah, can you move the mic, please? Thank you.
Yeah, so we had a previous approval, a three-building site, a few years ago, that that approval has since been vacated and terminated. And then we submitted an application a couple of years ago for the OLCC site, which we then withdrew also.
And OLCC, this is Jeff Samuels, OLCC purchased the property in, I believe it was July of '23.
Okay, and why was the original project vacated?
The Trammell Crowe?
No, the project to include the headquarters office at the site.
OLCC thought, at one time, thought we were going to, had hoped to come with a headquarters onsite with a warehouse attached. But then, then we have since decided to utilize existing state-lease office space for our headquarters. So we're working with DAS to do that and then just concentrate on the distribution center.
Right, and I guess my question is why?
Part of it is economics, and part of it is, there's a lot of state-owned office space that's available for lease. And so it would accomplish several, several, be several positives to doing it that way versus building a brand-new, building a brand-new headquarters building.
Right, okay, that's helpful, thank you. And I was looking at the transportation study data. It was hard because some of it was prior to some of those changes being made. I think it even made note that the transportation studies weren't always updated based on those changes to your application. And there were a number of notations, like the applicant should put signage at their driveways, so when the trucks or employees or members leave the driveway... driveways, so when the trucks or employees or semis leave the driveways, they understand the instructions about which way to go. And I think I heard earlier someone saying, well, it's not really clear whose responsibility some of this signage is, and it makes me uncomfortable that it's part of a traffic study, but I don't know where, as a city, how and where we get the, I don't know, the details documented on how that gets enforced, the signage, and, you know, I heard earlier if somebody's concerned about jake brakes, which in that area, they shouldn't be using them, and so who's responsible for that signage? And so that's just something for me to think about, is, one of the transportation studies said that the, it had a really good design of the traffic flow in and out of the facility, I thought it was excellent, it showed that about 50% of the trucks would be going south, and 50% would be going north, and so some of them would be going out First Street, and some of them wouldn't. And it said that might change with the inclusion of Walnut Street, but that's up to the applicant. So there again is something that's a little airy-fairy for me, based on documentation that was included in the application. And what I hear is some verbiage, I mean verbally, people saying something different, but the application doesn't say that, so I'll just leave that there. And that's all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Deroche. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Planning Manager Potter, do you have any comments about signage to kind of dovetail on what Commissioner Deroche was just talking about?
No, I don't necessarily have an answer to that. I'm looking at the supplemental traffic study, identified seven suggested conditions, but I don't, I don't see any about signage, so the one Commissioner Deroche was talking about must be in the original traffic study, unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me.
Is that something that we can compel staff to get sorted prior to our second reading?
You're talking about adding a condition? I mean, yeah, the Planning Commission could certainly add a condition. It's always better to have it as precise as possible, so we encourage the Planning Commission to articulate exactly what they would want that to say, if that's the direction to ask staff to add a condition.
Commissioner Deroche, would you want to take a stab at wordsmithing that? You know, no jake brakes and truck, truck route traffic only, or something along those lines?
I, I would not be, and only because, because we have kind of conflicting traffic studies, and then information that's been changed, and I just don't think we have enough information to have that be concrete right now, sorry.
Okay, fair enough. Commissioner Driscoll?
Thank you. I have some questions about the stormwater drainage. We have an email that was from Friday the 6th with some changes to the stormwater plan. In the documentation that we reviewed, there was going to be two separate paths for the stormwater, the kind of east and west halves were going to drain into different areas, and it says in PW5 from the email with Ben and Ryan Potter and some other folks, that Public Works still wants drainage for the Hill dress property, and there will be no additional cost to the project, as proposed drywall has capacity to accept this additional drainage. Regarding the portion of Walnut north of the cemetery, Cambie Public Works requested that no additional drywells be built there in the undeveloped area, and then we will connect directly to the existing said MH just drywalls from the Shakespeare Project, and that they've updated the storm report accordingly for both of these. What exactly is the Shakespeare Project, and what part of the drainage proposal from the actual warehouse is going to be tying into that, if any?
Shakespeare, also known as Columbia Distributing, it was an alias name for construction in the original application.
Okay.
With the Columbia Distributing, there were several drywells installed along Walnut Street, and through coordination with Public Works, we've identified that we can eliminate a few, and I believe within that.
So the original proposal said that it was to have kind of like a high watermark of 4.65 inches of rain or something in a so many hour period. Are we foregoing having that 100-year flood mark of absorption because we're instead using this other existing system that might have less capacity, or?
No, I think the, the design of the original system was a little bit over, over what was required, so there's extra capacity within that system to accommodate what we have.
Okay, so we shouldn't be losing any overflow capacity by tying into the other system?
No.
And does that mean that then there's only one drywall system actually onsite on your guys' developed project now, instead of two?
We are actually not utilizing a drywall system onsite. Our onsite will be underground infiltration with chambers, it's a little bit different than the drywall system.
Okay.
The size of this site would require a lot of drywall.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm super duper familiar with it, and that's why it's like, ah, we'll ask. Okay, thank you. There was a geotechnical engineering document that was pretty lengthy, and it was really looking at the soil quality for the development site. Pretty much, it seems like it's very sandy for roughly 10 feet down, sometimes a little less, sometimes even more, and then it's pretty solid. But I didn't see anything that was really making mention of any seismic requirements. It was included for a reason, but I'm curious why? Like, what were you really, what were you really looking for from that information, and how did it get incorporated into the design?
The infiltration of the water system mainly. So once we get through that sand layer and we reach a dense gravel layer, that's what allows the water to infiltrate.
Okay, so it's really just assessing how far down does it need to go to hit the gravel layer?
Yep.
Okay. Specific to seismic strength, what's the building capable of withholding or sustaining?
I have our structural engineer here, if we want to speak to that. The soils report typically were at 2,500 PSI, so the soil itself can hold the building, and we designed the building, which is concrete tilt-up with a lot of steel, that'll withhold any seismic event expected.
How many trucks will fit in that queue area? The area that's supposed to be open 24 hours a day? When I was, I was counting on your diagram, and it looked like there'd be 15 that could be inbound at any given time. Was that to scale, or was that just kind of a graphical representation of trucks that might have been a little bit less specific?
It's a graphical representation that is to scale.
Okay.
I'll let Jeff speak to the actual truck traffic, because I don't think there will be 15 trucks queuing out there at any given time. I think the truck traffic's pretty minimal.
For shipping, we're, we're talking about 10 doors, and putting in, you know, 10 trucks at a time. But we don't, as far as this certain number, I don't know if I can answer, I'm not the, I'm not the distribution person, so I don't know.
Yeah, I was just curious, because we clearly have an issue with Columbia, and their vehicles queuing out on the road, and I'm really surprised that that's been let go, that we're just going to let trucks hang out there. And it seems that your design allows for definitely some semis to be able to be off of Walnut and waiting if for some reason they need to. I mean, you guys open at 6:00, some of them might show up at 4:00, whatever, you know, just to have a place for them to be in queue, and that's why I was curious. We had that number.
Yeah, and I think that was the intent, why widening that center drive aisle, if we could potentially leave that at 35 feet and it'd be autos only, but that would eliminate our entire, our entire queuing length, so widening that drive aisle to 50 feet helps us gain that extra queue.
Do all, does First and Walnut, that intersection and the improvements there, is that going to widen it to 50 feet as well, so trucks, if, if they are actually turning on and off of Walnut and First, that they can make the turn without going over the center line?
Yeah, the intersection at Walnut and First will be designed to city standards, so that'll meet...
Ryan, are the city standards 50 or wider? Perfect. Honestly, I believe that might have covered everything I have. Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
So I don't really have questions, I just have major concerns on this. And I understand the traffic count, I understand the promises being made here, I understand the contracts, but we've been down this road before. We've been through it with Columbia Distributing, we've gone through it with others, that's not what happens, okay? And so, to me, it's, it's not just transportation from Walnut to, or Walnut Street from First to 99E. I think this town has an overall traffic issue with a lack of a plan, and it, we have a plan, we've had it for years, but we don't implement it, because somebody says, no, we can't do that, so then we don't update it. And the problem with that is, just like with Columbia Distributing, is we, all of a sudden, people find alternative routes. And that route from Haynes up to 99E, how many people are going to have to die there before we put a traffic light there? Just like what happened in territorial. And the other thing I think is concerning to me, and this town just misses a beat on, is all these companies come in with this truck traffic, and we know eventually this infrastructure is going to be needed, and there's never any latecomer agreements. We are seriously missing a beat for that. All these people should be involved with future traffic lights on this, on this thoroughfare going up from Haynes to 99E. How is the traffic going to go out north, how's it going to go out south? This is just another two or three years, we keep doing this, this is going to be a nightmare, it's already a nightmare in territorial.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Commissioner Hutchinson?
This is essentially what the industrial park was designed for, as far as the height variance is concerned, it's very similar to the one that we granted to the Amazon facility, and for the same reason as rack height, than trying to get as much value out of the footprint of the property as possible. I, I'm having a hard time visualizing things until that road gets punched through. I'm sure it's a mess right now. I don't drive out there for reasons as much as I can. And so my hope is, is that once the Walnut Street extension is finished up, that a lot of these problems will, will be mitigated to a degree, especially if they give them a little room for overflow on Walnut. So, other than what I've said, I really don't have much to say, it's, it's, it seems to be pretty much what we were looking for, and more concentrated product, so that should help keep the truck traffic down to a minimum. And did you say 10 slots, 10, you got 10 bays planned, is that?
Yeah, 10 loading doors.
Yeah, quite a bit smaller. That's it.
Commissioner Ellison?
All my questions were answered, thank you.
All right, so I'll wrap her up a little bit here.
May I ask one more before we move on?
Well, I didn't mean wrap up, wrap, I just meant, well, yeah, go ahead, never mind.
So the traffic studies show that there would be 140 trucks coming in and out every day, and it also made mention of it being a two-hour window between when a truck arrives and when it leaves. So how does that figure out with 10 bays? It's a 12-hour window, 10 bays, so that's 120, so we're already short with the number of trucks coming in, the number of bays.
So there's a shipping and receiving side, and we basically, we have 20, 20 doors, but 10 on each side.
I, I thought I'd see a larger number, but I wanted to check, thank you.
Jeff, just going back, I'm not trying to beat you up on this issue of managing the employee traffic, but specific to whether they're employees or contract delivery drivers, once you're open, I'm not talking construction, I'm talking about regular routine, daily stuff, you mentioned that you can enforce those truck and trailers to go a certain route, is that correct? And assuming Walnut is pushed all the way through to 99, you can enforce your drivers, whether they're contract employees or employees, to use Walnut to get up to the property, correct?
We do, we do have contracts with the trucking companies for shipping and receiving.
Yep.
And we could do that.
Okay, and I think that's really...
With our contracts.
That, that's the biggest sensitivity that I'm hearing, and maybe I'm wrong, but that seems to be the reoccurring theme, and I read a lot of the comments that VLMK had with the public, and traffic is just a really, really big concern. You know, I live in downtown Cambie, and I, I see the signs that say truck routes, and there's a lot of the repeat vendors that still use Fourth, and then they've got a hairpin 90-degree turn that's really narrow for them to make, and, and so I, you know, when we have an opportunity to work with the applicant face-to-face, it's nice to get at least some level of assurance that there is a control mechanism that can, that you can enforce with those drivers to not meander through and just hit that Walnut when it's available.
And, thanks, Chair, and I, from our public comment periods, you know, we have, OLCC has tried to be, be a good neighbor, and to do the things that, that the neighbors have asked for, you know, like, your BlackBerries on, on First are, you know, getting huge and overgrown onto the street, and so we, you know, we took that advice and removed those, and we're trying to build our facility so that, you know, it is back from First Avenue. Now, we're leaving that First Avenue section of the property, we would leave that, you know, with your approval vacant, and, and have our truck traffic and our employee traffic come in on Walnut, you know, strictly, and, and we've tried to be cognizant of that and, and comply with those things.
That's appreciated, I know the citizens will appreciate that a lot, too, so we'll look forward to seeing that play out, once you guys occupy. That other lot, though, that was going to be my follow-on question, is if that's going to be left undeveloped, do you, you will own that whole parcel, correct? So will you be maintaining that undeveloped lot so it doesn't get all crazy? I think you probably will, but just want to say it on the record.
OLCC will be maintaining our, the entire property.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you both very much, I appreciate you answering all the questions, and I think at this point, unless any of the other commissioners have any comments, I think we are ready to entertain a motion, and does anybody want to start?
I'd like to make a motion to approve DR 2401, conditional use application 2401, and the property line adjustment application PLA 2404.
I second.
One point of clarity is that also, so those three, those, those captured the driveway issue, the lot line issue, the height issue, and there's one other issue. What was it?
Parking.
And parking issue, so all, all three of those, if we approve those, we are essentially saying we approve all of those conditions, as written.
That's correct.
Okay, and you have a second?
I second.
All right, Commissioner Deroche?
Are you voting for a vote?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. I vote no. For me, there are too many conflicting statements in the documents, I mean, it's really frustrating to me to have to reconcile statements that were made at the neighborhood meeting that don't jive with statements that were made tonight, and traffic study information that may be outdated, I just don't think we have enough information, and a contract might say, we want you to follow the truck routes, but, you know, where does it come in about jake brakes and speed limits, and I just don't think that's enforceable with a contract. I just don't think we have enough information that, that is reconciled to vote tonight, that's my opinion.
Are we going to have a discussion at all, or we're just going to vote?
I think I'd like to get a vote, and then if we can't pass it, then maybe we revisit our discussion. Would that be appropriate, Mr. Potter?
I think that, that's up to you, Chair.
Okay, I just want to make sure there's no precedence for or against one way or the other.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
And if I wanted to add a condition to approval, at what point would I?
Well, the, the motion's been made to approve or deny as written, so either you approve or you deny.
As written, I'll deny.
Okay.
I'll deny as written. What, Judy on this?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
I approve, as written.
Commissioner Ellison?
I also approve as written.
And then I have a denial for myself, so... So, we need to, I think, open up and discuss how, what items specifically need to get addressed, because I don't, I think, I think there's a few more things that we could probably vet here. And I'd like to start with Commissioner Juroch. I guess on that one, though, I don't know who we would direct the signage issues to just yet, and then the conflicts or the, what'd you say, the reconciling of information. Can you state again a couple of those items that you, that didn't make sense to you?
Sure, I can. But I think also, what I wanna say is, the elephant in the room here is the Walnut Street extension. And, you know, I mean, we all know about it, as citizens, we know how citizens feel, and yet we keep approving things without knowing the, you know, the timing. And yeah, that's ODOT, and yes, we can't control it, but I also don't have enough fact-based information from our city's experience with ODOT is what percentage of the time they delay. I mean, it feels like 100% of the time, I don't know, that might not be fair, but it feels like it from a citizen perspective, and they delay a long time, and then weather gets in the way. So, our hopes and wishes about thinking that extension will be done before they move in, I think it's just a hope and a wish, and that's not something that I can vote on. I mean, as a citizen, for me personally, it feels irresponsible, because we're just at, like, fuel to the fire. So, that's the biggest thing for me. But I'll just mention, you know, I get so frustrated trying to reconcile different documents that say different things. So, I'll just mention one thing. This was from the neighborhood meeting, and there was a question about the truck traffic and which way it would go. And, let's see, it said that the site plan was designed so that trucks would circulate from both First and Walnut to meet fire access requirements. And truck driveways are positioned to provide access, and they're located along the east and west side. OLCC operations is planning on the Walnut Street extension to be completed, and they may consider routing more of the truck traffic onto Walnut Street. Well, that's very different than what we heard tonight, but that's older information. But this is where, you know, I'm looking at an application, and I just don't know which is right.
Ben, do you wanna-
One example, I have numerous, that's one.
Yeah, please, Ben, go ahead.
Yeah, I think they're both correct, in a sense, 'cause First Avenue is allowed to be used for, by auto traffic, and Walnut to Sequoia is also allowed to be used by auto traffic. So, our original application for fire circulation, all streets will be used for access. The Walnut Street extension will be used primarily by truck traffic, eliminating-
That's not what the document says. I was only referring to truck traffic, so if you look at the notes from the neighborhood meeting, it's very different.
Yeah, I think we would like to clarify that, once the Walnut Street extension is complete, it's assumed that nearly 100% of all truck traffic will be used in that Walnut Street extension, with the, with the exception of somebody that makes a wrong turn. So, I would propose that we add some signage to the property, directing a left-hand turn on Walnut from all entrances onto the site, directing traffic north Walnut to 99. I would also propose that we write in conditions for our public improvements along First Avenue to include the signage for the Jake break and the 90-degree turn onto Hazeldale.
Right. And that's, that's, thank you, that's helpful, thank you. But, again, just from a vote perspective for tonight, black and white, there's too much to reconcile here, for me.
Okay. That addition goes along, goes a huge way, a huge distance for me, sorry. And that would be a condition that I would ask the planning commission, I'm sorry, the staff, to have written in for the second reading. Would that be, is that when we would see that? Or they, would they have to go and amend their application to specify, call that out specifically? No, we could, conditions of approval could be added prior to the final findings being finalized, and then that would come back to the second vote for you guys. All right.
Hi.
Commissioner Driscoll.
Yep. To kind of echo some of what Judy brought up, I do think that it's fair to say, I was disappointed to get this Friday memo about changes to the public works stuff, like when we walked in here, and even some of the changes that happened in the last month, to hear about it now, because there are some conflicts. Like, I'm not as worried about the public meeting that happened a year and a half, two years ago, having something different than what's evolved in the time since, with all of the different iterations. Like, I'm less concerned about that. But it is just somewhere we generally maybe could really draw a line in the sand. This is it. This is what's relevant to certain parts of it. I would like to see if it's something we can do to add a condition of approval that the OLCC operations certificate of occupancy is tied to the Walnut Street extension being complete. Because if we let any truck start going the wrong way, it just kind of opens up that they will continue to look at it differently, that if we start operations and it's open. Now, that might give Jeff some heartburn, 'cause now he has to wait on ODOT to actually follow through, and does it happen on time. But for me, that would be something that would allow me to say, "Yeah, everything's cool," because it is that Walnut Street extension that so much of this hinges on, for the people who live nearby, for just making sure that the trucks are really going in an area that we want them to. Because Haynes Road is super dangerous, and it's outside of the jurisdiction of the city of Canby, so we can't make improvements to it. We have no authority to get involved, and ODOT is not particularly motivated to make changes until a lot of people have died in a particular area. And I also don't wanna wait and see that happen. So, to me, if Walnut Street is up and running, then I'm not worried about the truck traffic from OLCC. And perhaps another condition, just that, to formalize, that they will include in their contracts that the trucks need to be using Walnut for the inbound and outbound traffic. That's all I've got.
I think that's a pretty, that's a pretty big ask to put them on, and I understand your motivations, and I, I agree with them to a certain extent, but I think that's a really big ask to them, because I think you guys have made it perfectly clear, you're doing everything you possibly can to put it in the contract, have it be as clear as possible. People are still gonna make mistakes and do the wrong thing. I mean, I live on Fourth, massive semis drive down Fourth all the time, even though Third is right there. But I don't know, I mean, that, like, that almost made me sick to my stomach a little bit, as like a business owner, thinking about hinging that on essentially ODOT's timeline, which we can't trust. I don't know if I agree with that. Now, what that means, though, if Walnut doesn't happen, now we have all these big trucks going all on the surface streets and all the things we don't want, and I don't like that either. But that, that, I don't know if I agree with that.
I don't know that I agree with it either, frankly. It's just kind of like, that is what my concerns hinge on, is-
Yeah.
If Walnut's there, I have no concerns whatsoever. And I also, for what it's worth, have no qualms, what's, that you guys are doing everything you possibly can and have all along the way, and I really do commend you guys for that. I'm just, I am concerned, we have so many failed intersections, like Haynes is a failed intersection, Pine and Fourth is a failed intersection. So, the two closest intersections, people could take Sequoia, the timing to turn on and off of Sequoia is quite questionable, but it's not a failed intersection, it's at least wider. But the other two places that people might go, in large trucks, with 300 extra semi-truck trips a day, are failed intersections.
I'd like to hear Jeff's feedback on, on the, on the ask. I mean, state agency, state agency, maybe you guys can, you know, work it out, I don't know.
Well, I'm trying to be, provide you the, an answer to what you asked, but also, when we looked at the property, the city talked about the Walnut Street extension, which was a benefit to OLCC and a distribution center, to buy this property and come, come before you and secure funding to do this project, knowing that the Walnut Street extension was going to happen, and we continually ask, "When is it gonna happen?" And, and we're gonna pay in-lu fees, substantial in-lu fees, that's gonna help, you know, as Ryan said. And, so I just mentioned that as well, that we, we have been engaged with the city to make sure that, you know, we, we meet the guidelines and that the use, you know, it is an industrial area, that's set up for warehouses, and that's what we want to build here and utilize. And, I understand what you said with ODOT, but to then, to then ask OLCC to get ODOT to help the city get the Walnut Street extension, I, I'm just, anyway. The first part, I think, is what I really wanted to say, is we, we had, we had worked with you all and heard what was going to happen with Walnut. It makes sense, it makes sense to float trucks out to 99 so that they can either get into the Oregon City Way or go to I-5. Of course, we're a statewide distribution center. It's, it's not just in Canby, it's all over the state, and we wanna, we wanna expeditiously get to, get our, get the product out to, to the, you know, to the stores, for many reasons. I hope I answered your question.
You did.
I think you did. I, I, like I said, agree with the intentions of, you know, keeping, getting rid of the headache that could happen if, if it's not finished in time, but I don't think it's fair to you guys to ask, to link those together. I don't think it's realistic if, God forbid, something does happen, and you've already done everything.
Yeah. I, I wanted to float it, but I would not recommend that we include it on a future vote.
So-
So, I would only ask that we ask, that we require them to include the contractors, tell them to use Walnut when the extension is complete.
So, I think Jeff has addressed that successfully. I think Ben has addressed some of the signage concerns that they can control, which are now in addition to what we heard earlier. So, Commissioner Willing, do you have anything that you've heard or haven't heard that you would like to hear about?
Ryan, what, so, we went through this with Columbia Distributing, and how would we enforce this? I mean, it's neat that they have this, and there's contracts and stuff, but when those trucks do start heading out Haynes, I mean, how do, how do we enforce it? We just say we do and we don't? Because that's what's happening with-
I think, I think that's precisely why it's problematic to add enforcement conditions to land use decisions. I think they really, they are hard to enforce. I think planning staff's position is it's, there's some enforcement that happens outside the planning process, and you can't always do that incorporated as part of a land use decision. Personally, I think that the signage is a, is a completely reasonable way of doing it as much as you can. You could add to the condition that there'd be periodic check-ins between OLCC and the city, to make sure that relationship is still solid, and that the material is still being circulated via the contracts or something. But beyond that, I'm not sure how else you could enforce it. The only other mechanism that I see is no different than, than what Nicole had done, which is contacting the city code enforcement if there is traffic issues that are habitual, and code issues that are, you know, being broken. But then, at that point, you know, it, it goes up the chain within the city, that we don't necessarily have any purview to. That's more of a, sounded like somebody made a call with Columbia Distributing to allow them to do what they're, whatever it is they're doing. Yeah, that was a little before my time. But I, I guess, this is a little tangential, but I'll put a plug in, that we're currently working on our transportation system plan update, and these are precisely the kinds of things that we should be and will be talking about. System-wide issues, patterns of congestion, where truck routes are, and so, I definitely welcome those conversations to continue as we get deeper into the, the transportation system plan update. All right.
I have just a, just, I don't know, question. Is that something that, I don't think so, but is that something that they can be, I mean, like, can police officers ticket truck drivers for using the roads that they're not contracted to use? Or is that-
No.
I don't think so, no.
Okay, I didn't think so either, but I just popped in my head.
Actually, I'm pretty sure that they can, 'cause it comes up in the traffic safety meetings, and they, it's published what the truck routes are, and if you use something that is not a truck route, you can be pulled over, and at their discretion, they could ticket you.
Interesting.
Haynes Road is a counter, so that would not be-
Yeah.
Yeah, but for other instances, yeah. But for Haynes, no.
Noted.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna float this again. I'd like to take a motion for DR 2401, CUP 2401, PLA 2404, with conditions being that, that the applicant will provide directional signage for incoming and outgoing traffic, and including no Jake breaks on that property to reinforce the desire for that area, particularly with the impact to the neighbors.
Okay, I would like to propose that we take a vote on the original as proposed from the planning department, plus the applicant's agreement to have a condition for additional signage, as requested and discussed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, starting with Commissioner Ellison.
Aye.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Aye.
I'm an aye. Commissioner Willing.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Juroch.
No.
No. All right, so, as it pertains to the application for DR 2401, CUP 2401, and PLA 2404, with the conditions of adequate signage for traffic directions, both in and out, plus no Jake breaking provided by applicant, is approved. And I think that is it for this hearing. Thank you both very much, and thank you for everybody that showed up to participate in the process. Appreciate you all. And we look forward to the project. Thank you. Yes. Not quite. Oh, close the hearing. Okay, sorry. Motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, this public hearing is officially closed. Thank you all very much, appreciate it. All right.
Now, items of interest.
I'm sorry, item, items of interest and a report from planning staff. Mr. Potter, go ahead.
Yes, our next meeting is scheduled for January 13th. We will not hold a second meeting in December. I'm just gonna repeat that, 'cause there was a little bit of background noise. So, the, the next meeting is scheduled for January 13th, Monday. That is because we are, we don't have anything to put on the agenda for the second meeting date, which is really close to Christmas. I'm assuming that's everyone's preference to not hold a meeting then. I also wanted to put in a plug for the next Comp Plan Advisory Committee meeting. They are meeting in February. I don't think that date is solid yet, but it'll be sometime in February. So, that's part of our ongoing Comp Plan, TSP, Urban Growth Boundary work that's ongoing.
Thank you.
And then, I was just gonna note that, Commissioner Driscoll, I would like, if you had comments on future presentations, I'm happy to hear those.
Yeah, so, I was going to ask, you had Slide 11, where you were showing kind of the yes, no about the failure or success of the intersections. There's the grading scale of A to F, including E. I would love to actually see the letter grade-
Sure.
-for each of them, as opposed to just the yes, no. Because we might say, an E isn't technically failing, but it's so darn close to failing, we should probably consider that it essentially is, 'cause the tiniest little nudge would. So, yeah, I think that that adds some value.
Yeah, whatever- Yeah, whatever we can do to, to make the information clear, absolutely.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
And that's all I have.
I think so.
All right. As far as the items of interest and guidance from Planning Commission is concerned, any commissioners would like to speak up at this time about anything, procedural, schedule, anything at all?
Just the Walnut Street Extension, earlier today, Public Works' schedule was that they would have it out for bid early in '25 and they would expect to finish it either end of '25, early '26. And so, if the construction schedule for OLCC is the 12 to 14 months that they had in their proposal, then I think we might stand a decent chance of them coming online at about the same time. And the city gets to build everything up to 99. And so, ODOT's really only going to be a potential delay or hindrance for getting all of like the signaling in, just for what that's worth.
Well, let's hope their timeline, timelines are accurate and that weather cooperates. So, we'll see. We're threading the needle, it's a little bit risky.
Yep. Here we are.
Commissioner Lawwell, any thoughts, comments? Commissioner Hutchinson.
Do we know anything about the Knights Bridge refurb project?
I, I have not heard anything about that for a while, actually.
It's been on the DL for a little while.
Yeah, I know they're, they were going to do the seismic retrofit and then they delayed it, but I haven't heard anything for a while. But I, we can ask for an update and bring that back in January.
Commissioner Ellison, nothing for you? All right.
Happy to be here.
Commissioner Juroch, just want to make sure I'm over communicating and checking with you because it's different when you're not here, sorry.
I know, and I very much appreciate that, so thank you. Just a couple of really quick things. One is, you know, for our group to think going forward is as ODOT delays, which our experience is that they do, so crossing our fingers, isn't that helpful, I'm afraid? But if, you know, what point is there tipping point that this Planning Commission says no more? You know, that ODOT is delayed to the point where we don't want any more big developments with truck traffic in that area. It's just something to think about for the future. There's got to be a point where we have to say enough. And, you know, I appreciate wanting businesses to come into the city, of course, and it looks like they've been at this a long time, but I also feel like mostly I represent the citizens and the safety of the citizens, so that's my perspective on that. So, there's just got to be a tipping point somewhere. The other thing is just an administrative item, and I've brought this up before and it's, it's in the, when we start the, the hearing, that it says how much time each person has. And it always says that the city has five minutes for their piece. And this, today, it was 20 minutes. I'm not saying that's bad or that the 20 minutes was badly used, it's just we need to fix the agenda item where it says how much time the city has. And this is the second time I've requested the script be fixed. So, maybe it's just Commissioner, or Chair Ellison's copy that's wrong, but, you know, we make that statement and then we go against it in the meeting, so let's try to get that fixed up if we can.
I absolutely agree and I will, I think I can just line out the whole, I just, I don't even have to really say much as far as the staff presentation, right? I'd just say staff will present, but then applicants have 20, proponents, opponents, I, I don't even have to put a timeline on, on staff, do I?
I, I need to check with Dawn. I feel like we enshrined somewhere those time amounts.
Yeah.
I, I personally think five minutes isn't enough for staff.
It never has been.
Because so many of these projects are relatively complex and I even breeze through over stuff. So, I think that's a conversation Dawn and I will have, and then we'll keep you apprised of what we, what we discuss, if that's all right.
Yeah.
They're definitely shorter than they used to be. I mean, I, I attended hearings before as part of the commission and you got the Planning Department top for like an hour and a half. It's like, who's presenting here?
Is, do you think it's reasonable to hear back on that by our January 13th?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, January 13th, we have the second reading and then we'll have this item to follow up on. And then, I can't remember what was the other item you, you said we were going to...
Oh, the Knights Bridge?
Yeah, thank you.
If I could, I just want, Judy, you've put words to a thought I've had, or that really was occurring to me this evening during the hearing, which is, my understanding as a Planning Commissioner is our hands are relatively tied. As long as the applicant comes in, they check all the boxes, they do all the things, we kind of have to just approve it. And that we, you know, we could, if it doesn't pass, it could come back on us and we have to defend why and all of that.
Not when they have a conditional permit.
Correct, correct. So, it made me uncomfortable with Walnut hanging out kind of in the air and not having that, but my understanding is I didn't really have the grounds to say no based on that. And so, I would love if we could come up with something of, you know, hey, we, we're not going to even entertain anything else until this is for sure at least started. Just because I, I didn't feel great about approving it, but I didn't think that I could say no.
Yeah, I, I think this is a good conversation that we should have with our city attorney and Dawn and, and this whole group. This, you know, this comes up in every city. And, you know, it, it does get problematic when you're having a, you know, a de facto moratorium on projects that are zoned for uses that are allowed, but you're disallowing them or not approving them, you know, for reasons outside their control.
Amazon could just decide to spin up any day.
Yeah.
Couldn't they? They're approved already, right?
Well, it's not Amazon anymore. It's a speculative project. But, but the, the issues you guys are bringing up, I think are, are definitely valid ones and I think we can have that conversation.
That'd be great because I just, you know, if I'm a citizen looking at it, I'm looking at me going, why the hell did you, why did you approve? You know, I don't feel great about it, but it feels like my hands are tied and I can't say anything, you know?
Right.
Having some sort of, something to kind of have our back in that situation that more solidly in place would feel really great.
For sure.
And I don't know what that is, but something.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable with putting, you know, triggers in approval from completely different governments.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I'm, I'm watching that go a swirl in Portland right now and it's like the more, I mean, this is kind of an in Canby decision and we have to acknowledge all of the outlying area around it, but then again, we can only control what we control. So...
And, and the in lieu fee that we've been applying to these projects is, is one of the workarounds that we've, you know, tried to come up with is because, like in the example of Haynes, we, we have zero control over Haynes. And so, all we can do is create system improvements within our jurisdictions that are going to alleviate that as much as possible.
And I, I would agree with Judy too. It's like, another big one comes along, I'm going to be more stubborn on no. I mean, this is just going to be crazy, what's going to happen here. And I guess we'll further our lines onto the council, but we need to get serious about a transportation system, not just plan it, but implement it. And not let somebody come along and say no, and then we do nothing for another 20 years. This is going to become a real problem. What we've just done tonight, you guys have no idea in the next couple of years.
And part of me tonight too is a message some of you heard me before with the applicants' there were way too many conflicts in all those documents and it's really frustrating. I mean, I read one verbatim that was totally different than what he said tonight. Okay, it was old, but then update your damn documents before you give it to us. It's too hard to figure out what they mean now versus then.
Well, that has to be included and it has to be in the packet, all of the public hearings. So, it's not like planning can leave it out.
No, I agree with that. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, when they put their presentation together, they should say, this traffic study was three years old and here are the differences now. That's their responsibility to come to us with an updated document. Three years ago, we told the citizens this, but now we've changed our plan. That's their responsibility, not ours, to ferret that stuff out.
Yeah, I guess I have some feedback for you guys, Brian, is because, yeah, you have to include it. So, when I saw it and that it was in conflict, I'm like, okay, this is a couple of years old, it was an initial public meeting, things have changed, so I wasn't as stressed about it. But it would be nice to just have it more explicitly addressed that, you know, this was said at this time, this is what it is, just for...
And there was nothing in the document that said it was changed. It wasn't until he said it. That's what really got me.
Yeah, neighborhood meetings are, are hard because that's such a snapshot in time and usually there are things that, that change. But I think the other thing I'm hearing is about the traffic study and this one, I can see where it's a little confusing because the original, the original traffic study is bigger and more robust and then the supplemental one is, is basically just verifying that the revised project is within the analysis of the original. It doesn't exceed that. And so, it doesn't go into as much detail because it's just verifying that the original analysis isn't being exceeded.
I read it as it was just backing out all of the vehicular trips that would have been attributed to them actually moving the administrative headquarters as well.
Right.
And the thing I'm most concerned about are the semis and that's not going to change. Those numbers are made the same. So, I'm like, well, I'm not a huge fan of the way DKS does their more extensive studies either. So, I'm just like, okay, so it was one to start with and now they summarized it that they took out some car trips and it's still the same level, not that helpful that it started out.
I think we can ask them, when that happens again, to, in the supplemental study, add more detail about the delta and how the traffic, or the truck trips in particular, are not just at a percentage of what they originally were, but precisely based on the operations that are going to happen. So, we can, we can take that feedback back to them.
This is adjacent, but a piece of feedback that I had in my notes that I didn't see when I looked at them, is could we potentially address, including semi parking for industrial projects? Because we have guidelines for passenger vehicles, how many are supposed to be there, but there isn't anything addressing semis. And clearly, regardless of operation hours, there are going to be some trucks coming and going that are going to be outside of operation hours unless it happens to be a 24-hour operation. But perhaps we make them use some of that space for queued up vi, um, semis. So, we don't have anything like whatever's going on on Walnut.
That is one thing I thought was really slick, how they did that, how they have it self-contained on their property. I thought that was actually really cool.
Yeah.
Columbia had even a piece of that, it would be super helpful.
Yeah.
So, Ryan, just, because I want to get a little more specific on the, the discussion that we were talking about earlier. When we, when we are dealing with a quasi judicial hearing and you, you have the, the Luba, you know, the, the Luba boogie mon, uh, monster in the background that we've all been threatened with, at least I was when I first got onboarded, but what, what those parameters are specifically, I don't, I don't think we have to do the whole ethics thing like we did with the city attorney that one time, which was like two hours, but really specifically, like you had highlighted rejecting land use based on some of the criteria that we were talking about rejecting and like when, when or how, how we wrestle, wrestle with that.
We can even use Walnut as a case study as an example of how we would make those considerations potentially.
Well, I just, I know Dawn, I, I don't know if Dawn's still with us on here or not, but I, you know, I know he's very sensitive to, you know, we can, we can hold the line all we want, but at the end of the day...
Yeah, in general, your decisions are supposed to be made on the criteria.
Right.
And if, and if no criteria are being exceeded or violated, I mean, it's generally supposed to be the mandate that it receives an approval. It's a little different when you start having variances and something like that and there's a little more discretion.
Yeah.
But I, I don't think that's, it's always a good idea to have more training and, and more clarification on, on that. So, I, I think we can, we can have a session on that.
It would be nice. Because I didn't feel good about approving it, but I felt like I absolutely had to.
I feel like I can hear Dawn on my shoulder like, hey, we've already closed this hearing out, so let's stop talking about this particular case. But in general, cases like this, like how we would tackle this going forward, that would be awesome.
And especially because I've been through several of the ethics trainings and they're very helpful, especially when an applicant has not just a, they have a conditional permit. And my understanding is that's up to us to say yes or no. But that would be good to talk about.
Yep. Cool. All right. Thanks, everybody. I think at this point, we'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Bye, Judy.
All right. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, see you on the 13th. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.